We'll do virtue wins. Yeah. These don't have to extend by most of them. Yeah. Yeah, one of them.
All right, take two. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting. Today is Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We are here live in the Burnie High School District, Burnie High School Auditorium, also broadcasting via Zoom. With that, I will call our meeting to order and ask Ms. Harris for a roll call, please. Here.
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 By present to absent. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Uh, with that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Pledge of Allegiance. This time, I will take a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Thank you.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, second, Ms. Gordon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, any pose? Motion carries. Starting off with new business, monthly financial report, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Floria.
Is that on?
Yeah. Sure is. Stand back a little bit. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, to grant that members of the board and members of the public. Um, they moved the podium down here so I could have a more, um, uh, an easier conversation and can see your faces, which is nice. Um, okay, so tonight I have a number of things to present. The first is, which is the monthly financial report, um, which is the year-end June thirtieth report. Um, I'm happy to say we ended nearly exactly, um, where we said we were going to in the projected budget, um, and a little bit ahead. On the local revenue side, it's a hundred and one point four percent of local taxes received in other funds. The largest difference there was, um, the local funds receipts because we project in the budget a point five percent delinquency. Um, and so we beat that, um, and were able to collect, um, almost, or in fact, more than a hundred percent of the estimated taxes. We've also received interest. Um, for those of you on the finance committee, or if you've heard this discussion in the past, the state treasurer's office, there's been, um, a lot of discussion about the low interest rates that have been, um, attributed or given to the school district local funds balances. Um, even though we have balances, you'd expect to receive at least some interest. And there's been quite a, a number of times that the, um, the interest payments have been zero. Um, we're happy to report that it's now almost four hundred thousand dollars, um, uh, for last fiscal year, which is three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars more than budget. So those two factors came in at, um, a hundred and one point four percent. On the state side, um, because of the increase in division one, uh, units that we received, the other funds along with that, um, we were at a hundred and two point six percent of division two, a hundred percent of energy. Um, cost recovery was up. The only one that was down was Ed sustainment. When I did the budget, I assumed that the increase in units that we received from September thirtieth count would translate to the Ed sustainment. It did not. It was calculated on the year prior. So we should actually see an increase in that going forward for next year. But state discretionary funds were ninety-nine point one, but state categorical funds were a hundred and one point seven percent of revenues received. Um, the main difference there was the Formula One salaries, like I said, because we had earned so many additional units. Um, all told, for state and local operating funds, we were a hundred and one point eight percent, exactly where you'd like to be, a little bit ahead of the game. Um, and then we'll look at the expenditure side, and we're a little bit below on the expenditure side, which means that our ending balance, um, I'm kind of cutting to the chase, but our ending balance ended about two hundred thousand dollars in local funds ahead of where we thought we were going to be. So instead of nine point one million, we ended at nine point three.
A quick question on that.
Sure.
So the interest, so was any of that, I know years over the last, at least two years, when we were in that period of zero interest, zero interest, zero interest, was any of that kind of catch up for the lagging interest, or that was just all interest for?
In a sense, it is catch up because they do it over a period of time. Um, and so it used to be a twelve-month rolling period. They reduced it now to nine. So essentially, it, it kind of catches up, but it's, it's always going to be that rolling average. Um, their points, the treasurer's office point is when that it's negative or, um, and negative can be in their investments also, because this is the cash management board. Um, so it's not truly what you and I would think of as, you know, interest in a checking account, but if they have negative performance, that they set the floor at zero, but it's a rolling average of nine months. So it, it, in essence, it catches up a little bit when it takes that.
I guess that was my question. This is for a, a, a rolling nine month or whatever the period, not eighteen or twenty-four.
It used to be twelve and they reduced it to nine.
Okay, thank you.
And set a floor of zero that it would never go negative. At least that was the last presentation we got. So then going to the expenditure side, this is the one where, and, and I know, I apologize, these are really tiny, um, n- numbers on these spreadsheets. Um, and so I, it's the next one, um, highlight in yellow so you can see kind of what pops out. And those are the ones that are negative. But the important thing to note is that in some cases where it's negative or went over budget, um, the revenues were also, um, over what was anticipated. So division one salaries, um, we came in at a hundred and one point oh six percent of budget, but our budget was over budget on the revenue side also because of those, excuse me. Because of that increase in division one funding. Um, so that negative does, isn't a negative towards the overall balance because we received the additional revenue on the state side. The other negatives, which we've talked about before, excuse me, one second. Our operations utilities, and that is our gas, electric, waste management, those costs, and this is universal. I've talked to other CFOs in other districts. They're seeing those increases as well. So our operations utilities budget did exceed, um, what our estimate was for the year by five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. On district transportation, that budget exceeded by one point two million. But it's important to note that on the revenue side, we got additional revenue of, and I'll tell you exactly what it is, one point one million dollars for transportation from the state. And so a lot of that is homeless transportation, foster care transfer, transportation. And so we're seeing it on the expenditure side and what we're providing. But again, when it's an, an additional revenue on the top, it makes sense that those, um, expenses are on the bottom. The other one is E cap, which is a small one, um, and that, what I explained to the committee last night, it's not often, you heard a lot about the twenty-seventh pay. It's not often you hear that the, the June thirtieth is the last pay day of the year. Normally, you have time to kind of fix things, or if there's an overage here, perhaps that was because it should have gone to IDEA. But when June thirtieth hit, it was whatever it was. Um, and so that catches up into the new year, um, when we have tuition funds and, um, IDEA funds that support our pre-K program. So again, it's, you know, it's, it's truly what the number is, but it's not because somebody spent more than, um, they should have, if that makes sense. So all told, we ended with, um, two point seven million dollars in, um, balances. The really important thing, um, to point out, because I'm going to tell you what the S R balance is going into the next fiscal year. The really important thing to point out is that there are a number of areas in our budget where it shows that people have ballot, people, departments have balances remaining. Special Ed is one department, um, curriculum is another one. Uh, even district-wide services where we have the substitute teachers. And the reason why there are balances there is because we're supporting those programs with S R funds. And the really important part of, there are some places where it's not in the budget. We're supporting things out of S R that aren't in the budget and are going to really be a problem a year from now when those S R funds are gone. However, the good news is that there are some areas in the budget where those are in there. We're able to support with S R, which is able to help our local funds, um, and they have remaining balances. So not only is the financial report a financial report, it's also a management report. Who is spending what in what areas or what departments? Um, and so if, we, we had a long discussion about this at the committee last night. If somebody has a balance left, does that mean they didn't do their job? Well, it could mean they had other balances in S R, they had balances in Title One. We always say spend the federal money first before you come to local funds, because we know we have to go to referendum for those. And, and the federal funds and state funds have expiration dates. And so where you see balances remaining doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't do their job. Um, and it may mean that from the district side, we're using those federal funds that we only have a year left, um, to support maintenance and operations is another one where, with HVAC projects, or if you talk about, um, um, you know, touchless water fountains, those kinds of things. Um, so it's important to say that those balances are there for a reason. The other thing to note is that we allowed for the first time, I think in a while, um, schools to carry over balances uh, so that the, the financial system cuts off in June, so that in June, it wasn't a frenzy just to spend, just to spend. But, uh, especially knowing that we're coming into difficult times, take some funds from this year, some funds from next year, and use them together over the summer to perhaps buy a larger classroom set or, um, something of that nature. And so there are carryover balances that the schools were allowed to carry over and built into the FY twenty-four budget.
Ms. Floria, uh, twice you've referenced, um, a discussion last night with the committee.
I'm sorry.
Could you just give an, an update for the audience of what committee met last night to review the finances?
I would be happy to. It's been a whirlwind week. Um, yes, so the, uh, district finance committee meets monthly. Um, it is a very engaging, um, and engaged group of citizens, um, who, who meet to review the finances. We were there for over two hours last night going line by line. We didn't even get to the preliminary budget. Um, we were going line by line through the monthly report. Um, I believe our chair is, uh, right here, Mr. Hanby, um, as well as members of, um, Mr. Scrobott attends, but yes, our meeting was last night, and that's the, the meeting I keep referring to. I apologize. Thank you. And Mr. Holter was there as well. So, um, on the expenditure side, we ended a little ahead of the game. On the revenue side, we ended a little ahead of the game, but all that means is that our ending balance is two hundred thousand dollars more than we thought it was going to be. But that's still good news, right? Nine point three million dollars going in. It's still a million less than it was last year. So we know we're spending more than revenues grow. Um, revenues only grow by a half a percent because until we get to the point where there's reassessment and regular reassessment um, or referendum, revenues are flat other than what property taxes increase. Um, and so I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself, but that is, um, that's kind of why that it, yes, it's a great ending balance ahead of where we thought it was going to be, but it's still been declining over the last, um, three years and is triggering what we're all talking about now with that referendum discussion. The, the last one I'm going to point out is, um, S R, um, the emergency relief fund. And we have, we're ending June thirtieth with one, with, I'm sorry, with eight point one million to go. So that's what we're going to spend in the last year. Um, and it's almost entirely spoken for, um, with projects and with, some of them have very long lead time from the facility side um, or curriculum projects or, um, things that we have, whether or not it's staff um, or, uh, contracts or services that are built into our operating budget. That's going to be the discussion as we build that referendum plan is what is in S R that we can't live without? That may, may kick something out of the budget or that may be part of our ask during the referendum. Building-based subs is the best example I, I always use, um, in that they've become a, a vital lifeline in the schools um, to know you have somebody there every day, um, and how can we sustain that in the future? Um, that's always the best example that I give. But it's important to note, we have eight million, um, going into the final year. And we will be able to use that. That goes through nine thirty, so we will be able to use that this year for summer school and next year for summer school under the learning loss category. That is a summary of the monthly report in our ending June thirtieth position.
And did the committee have a recommendation?
The committee had a recommendation. The committee approved the monthly report.
Just two points. Um, the district financial committee that was mentioned is a meeting posted on our website, open to the public. Typically meets second Wednesday of the month, um, but dates change depending on some of the deadlines, uh, before the district. And you mentioned earlier, the, some schools having balances, that, that spend the federal money first. Uh, is it fair to say that just the district's financial stewardship, in addition to the S R funds, have helped us stretch our dollars to, uh, not have to go to referendum since two thousand sixteen? Is that a fair?
That's more than fair. Not only has the district been able to do that, the di- district has been able to do that without significantly increasing any of the tax categories. When I looked, again, I'm, I'm previewing my next presentation, but the tax rate that's recommended today is only three percent higher than it was in two thousand seventeen. So you've done it on the same money, um, and stretched it over time. Absolutely, that's a fair assessment.
Um, not exactly the topic of this presentation, but you had mentioned the, um, building-based subs. Are, are there other, what other employment categories are we funding with S R money right now or other roles?
Technology, um, is a big one, and it's why you'll see there's a tech refresh line in the budget that hasn't been touched because we've been trying to take the tech match that we have to try to build that, um, sustainability for, we're going to have all of these devices then that don't have, you know, a forever life. And so what is our replacement plan and refresh plan? And how much will that cost over time? So that's one. We have some related services that are in S R for student needs that developed over COVID. Um, and we're addressing that. Uh, that's another category, some facility stuff. We tried to keep that to one-time stuff. But there, there are some, um, there are some positions that are currently funded out of S R. Now we're anticipating unit growth, and so the hope is over time between opportunity funds and, um, that unit growth that, you know, we'll be able to absorb that, but that's part of the discussion. And, and quite frankly, as you look at it, it's things you'd expect to see, um, coming out of S R funds, which, which is good.
I have a question, um, and I'm not going to use the right terms, so I apologize. But I do recall that there's a, either a board policy or district finance committee policy regarding a balance that, um, and is it two point five million?
Three point two million.
Three point two million. So, um, where is that right now?
That is, it's called a reserve. Um, you're absolutely using the appropriate terms. It's called a reserve. It is a board policy. And at the point that we would touch the reserve, the board policy speaks to, you have to have a plan to replenish it. And so when I report to you the ending local balance, it doesn't include that reserve.
Okay, and where is, what is that reserve currently?
It's three point two million and it sits in a separate appropriation all by itself.
Okay, thank you. And I guess another follow-up question to that. Is it always three point two million or am I recalling that maybe like a year or two ago that there was money moved into reserve over what the policy?
It, it's a great question because, um, let me see if I can find it. There's language that speaks to it.
Oh, you have it?
It's set at a percentage of the budget. And so if the budget grows, right, if the budget grows, then we can add extra money to it to keep it at that minimum percent.
At the minimum of seven percent, not necessarily a, a balance.
It's less than that. It's five and ten.
Between five and ten.
Yeah, it was, that's what's in the policy.
Thank you.
So if the budget grows to where it's below that, we need to add to it.
Thank you.
But it's interesting because I was looking at it. There's not a mechanism, the, the policy exists, it sets it. And so the three point two is within that range, but it doesn't speak to how it's adjusted between that range. Um, and so we're, we're not really in a position to add to it at this point. I wish we were. Um, but it's an interesting question because the policy doesn't speak to, it just says, here's the range, and you can be within the range, but then it wouldn't, at what point do you add to it? Or, you know, at what point, what point do you want it to be six percent or nine percent? Um, what is the right percent? But we're definitely in the range.
Thanks.
Do I hear a motion to accept the monthly financial report for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion, Ms. Doc, second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Motion carries. Preliminary budget.
Mr. Scrobott, before, before we jump into preliminary budget, um, I, I imagine those viewers at home, uh, members of the public might be wondering, why call a special board meeting? And, um, I, I have to applaud Ms. Floria, uh, for calling that special board meeting. And I, I asked her if she could speak to that before, um, presenting the other pieces on the agenda for this evening.
I would be happy to. Is that okay?
Yeah, I was going to bring it up when we did the tax warrants, but now, now, now's perfect time.
So the timing of doing the budget and the tax warrant, um, i- is tricky. By law, the tax warrant is due to the county by the second Thursday in July. Um, our regularly scheduled board meetings are the third week. Um, June, because of Juneteenth, the board meeting was extra early, um, more than normal. And so what happens in June down in legislative hall is there's often, um, significant budgetary or legislative action that can impact the budget. Last year was a great example that in the very wee hours, um, or late days of June, they passed the enhanced minor cap, which the district had an opportunity to match. And so going into June and setting something so early, um, prevents an opportunity, one, from knowing all the information you have going into a budget, um, but two, can potentially prevent you from matching or, or doing something on the tax rate that would be impacted. Um, and so going to the regularly scheduled July meeting is too late to do the warrant. Um, and so we were kind of between a rock and a hard place and said, um, well, we absolutely have to do the warrant by Thursday. Um, but let's at least do it not, not in the June meeting because, um, it was too early to know all that would come from the state.
Thank you.
So these are all intertwined. Um, so this is the FY twenty-four preliminary budget, which draws from, how did we end, um, June thirtieth? It also draws from the tax warrant that I'm going to talk about in terms of the tax rates. Um, but this one, uh, the main process in developing the FY twenty-four preliminary budget is of course what happened at the state budget, um, and what were the legislative changes? What was the June estimate versus the fiscal year closeout, which I just gave you? Um, and the current year actuals, which was part of that report. But then what are our projections for student count for September thirtieth? And that includes not just our own projections, but what happens in choice and charter, um, and those enrollments as well. And so it's a, it's a project, a projection based on the known of last year and experience, and then what we know to be coming in the future. Um, the state budget and legislative highlights, um, the biggest one by far, and you will hear about this, um, is that the state funded steps, um, but they also funded three percent, um, increases for all education, um, scales as well as an additional six percent, um, for the teacher scales, making the teacher scales a total of nine. Not necessarily on the scale, and that's been somewhat controversial. Three percent is on the scale, and then six percent is as an additional pay. Um, with the intent, this came out of the Public Employee Compensation Committee, um, work that was done and the, the idea of getting Delaware, starting salaries in Delaware, teacher salaries, um, up to a, a minimum level. Local salaries, this is just on the state side. Local salaries, um, vary by district across the state. Um, but obviously with a nine percent teacher increase, it's going to drive our, um, state funding estimate significantly. Um, we also have anticipated unit growth again. Last year, um, I presented to you that we went up by sixty-six units. Um, that was the most significant increase in units we've seen. Um, this year, we have, and this is a low ball number from the state because the state provides a guaranteed unit count. We're guaranteed to go up to eight hundred and sixty. That's an increase of twenty-eight units. And if you think about that, at twenty-eight units, just, that's the state side. On the local side, that would be, that will be an additional one point one million dollars. So remember that when I talk about the tax rate in tuition, because that means that, great, that we're going to earn additional units, but we're also going to be responsible for the local share of those additional units going in. Part of that is because devisers changed, so it's not just new students. Um, part of it is the, um, needs-based funding, what category students fall in as well as, excuse me, as well as the state, um, codifying in the unit system, the HB three hundred, um, which is for the mental health, the HB one hundred for elementary, those units are already in the unit count. HB three hundred will now be in the unit count this year. Um, in addition to that, legislation, legislative action changed the divisor for K three basic um, and pre-K down to eight point four consistent across, um, now K twelve for basic. So all of that together, I think we're going to go up by more than twenty-eight units, but that's the minimum guarantee that, um, they gave us. And let me say, I mean, I've never seen the state increase the guaranteed unit count. And, uh, and in times, it, it has been valuable to have that because that gives you a guarantee to go into your staffing process with how many positions you can fund. Um, there was a small state pension increase, uh, point three two percent, but that affects the, just like a general salary increase, that affects all of the employee cost. There was an increase in the transportation formula and state driver scale, um, based on transportation. There was an increase in the transportation formula and state driver scale based on transportation, task force recommendations. There was this, and this is all on the state side. There was a significant increase in opportunity grant funding. 15 million statewide for us, that'll be an additional 800,000. School safety and security funding continued, and in fact, we'll get an additional 100,000 additional on top of what we're already getting. In this session, there were, there was legislation proposed to put units in for safety and security staff, officers, constables. It's still out there being discussed, so it'll roll to the next session. But good to see that, you know, legislative action is, is being discussed at that level, too. The state give back continues, so that will still be part of our, part of our process and giving back that money. And then the other thing is, while all fingers were crossed that at the last minute, enhanced minor cap would happen again, it did not. So there was no enhanced minor cap funding in the state budget, but there was additional 8.2 million in capital funding for Bush. So those were all of the legislative changes that kind of go into projecting the budget. I'm back on slide three. I think I confused you. So the results we talked about, our local funds ending balance is about 200,000 higher than the estimate. And then putting together the budget, of course, you would hear all of the things that I just laid out to you from, because there's not a significant increase. We can't do it without a referendum. So on the tax side, there aren't significant changes. And so the budget itself, this is the next one, the budget itself includes our local funds went up by 0.5%. This is the kind of summary of what happened on the revenue side. That's just general assessment. And that's consistent growth. I've seen it across districts, across the county at a half a percent. Certainly not even close to CPI. One of the CFOs told me they did a chart on what would happen if our actual assessment went up by the CPI and we'd never need a referendum. Quite frankly, but that's the goal of getting to reassessment. We're far from that. And again, because we saw the increase in interest this year, it's anticipated next year as well. The choice and charter, those payments are based on the salary compensation, and so those estimates are 3% increase. Not necessarily a change in students, like it's not anticipating a 3% increase in the number of students going to charters. It's just the amount that it's going to cost for those who are already there. And again, it builds in that, that local funds balance, it's now a million less than it was last year. It puts in the needs-based funding for the increased tuition for intense and complex units, the local side, as well as the state division one side. And those again are for this increases, the teacher salary. These budget presentations seem repetitive, but it's because it all drives from the same thing. The state puts in the salary increase. You'll see it in revenues. You'll see it in expenses. The transportation formula increase, the opportunity increase, all of these are additional revenues that you'll see in the budget. Similarly, you'll see them on the expenditure side. So putting all of those in has a projected revenue estimate of 211 million. This concerns me not, I mean, it's wonderful. It's wonderful that the state has put in so much additional. It becomes an explanation, though, a responsibility to, as we go to the public and talk about budget growth. It's a 5.1% budget growth, but we own it. It's good. This is all coming from the state and supporting our staff, supporting our teachers, supporting 3% staff statewide, as well as the students with increasing the number of staff available. So similarly, if your revenues go up, you would expect your expenditures to go up. Because when the state puts in money, it's not like we can take it and put it in the bank to hold off a referendum. They put it in for division one salaries, and so you would expect to see it on the expenditure side for division one salaries. The local salaries reflect the negotiated increases as well as the, excuse me, the increase for the cost of those additional units that we will earn. The transfer, it includes the transportation increase as well as the opportunity fund. It does increase the HR budget because of a new background check process and also reflects the operations utility increases that we saw last year. So that one, you know, not over budget, but in a sense capturing what we expect the market prices to be in those categories. The one thing, and this, this one is very important for me, and I'll talk about it with the principals, too. The school budgets now are going to look very different. And equity is a very important thing when you look at budgets to make sure people are funded and schools and students are funded in a similar manner. However, not everybody had a carryover balance. Some spent to 98%, some spent to 85%. And so if they spent to 85%, that's okay. I carried forward the balance. That was the, the rules going forward. And so I just want to point out that a school budget of the same size or same demographics, or what you would think they should have the similar budget, might be different because of those carryforward balances. It's always tricky in the first year when somebody says, hey, how come that budget's bigger? And it's strictly based on how much, the formulas didn't change. It's all based on the number of students. You know, a larger high school is obviously going to have a larger budget than a small forward, for example. But that, again, two identical schools might have different, different budgets based on that carryover. Debt service. So this is going to be a big part of the, oh, go back. It's the second to last line. It's going to be a big part of my tax rate discussion, but debt service, our, our amount that we are paying on 20-year bonds, that expenditure is down by a million dollars. And it's expected to continue to decrease. And so we'll talk about this when we get to the tax rate presentation. But the budget reflects that decreased expenditure, as well as obviously removing the enhanced minor cap. The other thing to note is that the nutrition budget, it may appear as if it's a significant change. In the prior budget, it didn't include the local funds. It included state and federal that we get, but it didn't include the local on the revenue side and/or the expenditure side. And so we wanted to, my goal in, in putting forth operating units like transportation or like nutrition is so that you can see all of the expenditures for transportation in one spot. Right? That there isn't a spot where some transportation dollars are really up in salaries and some are, that it's all in one area. So where transportation has a negative on the expenditure side, it also has a negative on the salary side because some salaries were going up in the general salary line. So nutrition, transportation, those were kind of fixed to include all of the categories within them to have more self-contained budgets. So that when we look at a salary budget, we know these are our operating teachers, custodians, et cetera. Then we look at transportation, we know those expenses are there. It's just more to kind of make a, each one its, its own, rather than having a bunch scattered throughout. So the preliminary, I always promise not to do really ugly charts, but this one is tiny. And, but it's the summary, and I know nobody can see it in the back here, but it, the story of this is that our projected ending balance for FY24 reduces to 6 million. That happens when your expenditures increase and your revenue only increases by a half a percent. This has been consistent over time. And this is the same message and the, the trigger that we know we need to go to referendum. We're spending more, our deficit is growing. Now we have a balance, so it's not financial crisis. It's not, it's, we still have the 8 million in federal funds, but it's the warning. And it's the, the red is the warning lights going off telling us that it's time. It has been since 2016, and, and we'll have that discussion, but this budget is a balanced budget, and yet, you know, we would have to, in order to cash flow into the next year in FY25, we would have to touch that reserve, and that is the trigger for knowing that it's, it's the right time to go to referendum. Last one is just the summary of all funds. It includes, everything I've presented is really the state local operating side and tuition. But then there are federal funds, nutrition funds, major minor cap, match tax, and when you add all of those together, the total budget is 228 million. As far as the budget, the tax warrant is the, is the vote tonight. The budget, I understand, is next month. And is that true? Or is it all tonight? I'm not sure. But in any case, looking ahead, I don't even have to answer that. The, the last slide is not if, but when, right? Looking ahead at the referendum. And so we know we need to go. We know that all of the numbers are pointing us there, that we have the 6 million ending balance. In addition to this, let me say this budget doesn't provide increases. It doesn't have new initiatives. It doesn't, it keeps things where they are. And if you know from your own household budget, keeping things where you are is getting harder and harder. There's cost increases, there's inflation, and so this budget by staying where it is essentially is cutting because things are more expensive. We're using those federal funds to help where we can, but we know it's time for referendum. In addition, we know our cash flow is going to be impacted by those additional units. The next step is, there's two pieces to a referendum. There's the operating and then there's the capital. And so the next conversation we'll have in August will be the, what part of the referendum is operating or part is capital as we prepare and apply for the certificate of necessity. And then, of course, we'll go through September, you need September 30th unit count to know how many units we will officially earn at that point. So that is the FY24 preliminary budget in a brief presentation.
I know there's a fair amount of information on there, and I do think that we should address this in some way at our regular meeting next Wednesday. I know, believe you're out. But yeah, I just want to make sure that we cover this through the course of our regular meeting because we are starting to talk about referendum and, you know, the, the whys and the hows. And I just want to make sure that we're being transparent with the public and not just doing this on a off special meeting, because I know the, the main driver was for the tax warrants this evening. So we have the presentation here, and maybe we'll just reference some of these numbers for the looking ahead piece.
I do have one question. Thank you so much for this very comprehensive presentation. I think this is actually very, very helpful. So given what our estimated balance is for FY24, do you have any kind of guess or hypothesis? When we go to referendum, what kind of increase we would be asking for, or is it just too early to say?
Way too early for that.
It's too early for that for a number of reasons. One is because the capital component to that is going to be very important. That process, that application that comes to the board in August, that application is submitted to Dover. We don't hear the results from that until October. So once we know, and it doesn't necessarily impact the operating, but it does in a sense of, you know, if you're doing things that will decrease energy, right? Or, or it, it can have an impact on, on operating. But then how big the ask is, there's going to be a number of factors that you can have your wish list and then you can start to pare down your wish list. But going into it, there's going to be kind of critical components and doing the Esser stuff. So I, I think it is too early to tell. But I also don't think it's not, I mean, it's not going to be a 50 cent one. It's not going to be something that is so large that it's going to be a shock. At least that, that's what I'm thinking right now.
So being that this is a preliminary document, the district finance committee didn't get a chance to look at it. I don't see any action to be taken this evening, not that somebody couldn't make a motion, but am I correct in saying that, that we don't need to, I mean, it's a preliminary working document.
Correct. And operations will continue.
Right, okay. If there's any motions, are there any motions? Anyone feels compelled? Was that the end of the preliminary piece?
It was.
Moving on to the main event of the tax warrants.
And let me just start to, I mean, by saying, I, I told Mr. Holder my apologies. My dad turns 80 tomorrow, and so I will be out of town. He asked my brother and I to come see him in Tucson, and so that's where I'll be next week. Not, not because I wouldn't want to be here, but I do want to be there, too. All right, so the tax rate development, same thing, right? What, what, how do you develop a tax rate? And how do you develop a tax warrant? And so there are certain criteria and assumptions you have to make or conditions you have to meet by law, and I put that on there for you. The tax warrant must be submitted to the county by Thursday. Our assessed property value is 3.4 billion. That is an increase of 0.5%. Components that go into that, the tax pool allocation and the equalization formula, that's, those are driven by formulas that kind of based on our overall tax assessment or our position statewide. Those formulas have been frozen for years. We're on the ninth freezing of the tax pool and the equalization formula has been frozen for even longer than that. Now, let's just talk about reassessment, though, because reassessment is happening. It is law and it is ongoing. However, those bills won't go out until the tax year for FY26. They are boots on the ground now. And so I just got the little notification that somebody had been at my house and they're doing those field inspections now. They anticipate that they're going to be completed by January of 2024. The mailers are going to be sent out, and then the review appeal plot process will be going through the end of 2024. So that those tax bills starting July 1 will include the new reassessment. So that timeline for us is also very important. It doesn't impact the need to go to referendum. It just will impact kind of the conversion and what that means as properties are reassessed values. The budget and the tax warrant and tax rates also continue to assume a tax delinquency of a half a percent. And again, this is a repeat, but the budget and tax are supported by the last year of temporary Esser funds. The, the next one is the state and legislative assumptions. I thought this presentation was going first. That was my fault. And so this was the slide I read to you in the first presentation, so it's a complete duplicate. And, and I wouldn't have had it in this one. I would have had it in the other one. But these are all the things I told you happened on the state budget side with the, with the raises and whatnot. So to get to the meat of the meeting tonight, what is the recommendation for tax rates? I'm going to blow your mind by telling you I'm recommending that the tax rate be reduced by 2 cents. It sounds nonsensical, except for when I said our debt service payments are going down by a million dollars. That means retired debt. That means those are projects. It's a good thing, but it's a bad thing. That means projects that are 20 years old are paid for. But if you think about something that's 20 years old, it needs new stuff and needs new attention. And so us reducing the debt service means that our projects that we did 20 years ago are getting older and older and older. And let me tell you, too, that the tax rate between now and 2030, which sounds like a long time away, but it's really not. It's only six years from fiscal year 24, will reduce by 14 cents. So we're retiring a lot of debt, and it's why you're going to hear the capital needs that we want to pursue and bring a certificate of necessity down to Dover. But this is the first of the, the start of that, and it's four cents. At the same time, I told you that there was an increase in anticipated units. With those units come additional local expenses. All those units, we were up in intense, up in complex, and so all of those units are happening on the special education side. So that tuition tax increase of 2 cents offsets somewhat that debt service, but it's absolutely necessary. And so the, the total recommended tax rate is a reduction of 2 cents in fiscal year 23. I'm sorry, calendar year 23, fiscal year 24. The average amount per household that Brandywine residents pay is 1797. That reduction is approximately $14. The average household assessment is 71,255, but we all know from reassessment and the need for reassessment that that's wildly different than what in market value or average market value is and will change by when those bills go out in January or July 1st of 2025. Each category I'll go through. So the first two, current expense and debt service, those are set by referendum. The current expense is a specific tax rate that we ask for debt service. Debt service are projects that we anticipate and then the bonds are calculated based on those projects. Tuition and match are both set by the board. And so each of these categories is an interesting conversation as we walk through it. On current expense, it's the next one. On current expense, there's no change because it's set by the voters. This is the one we're talking about going to ask again. The last one was set in twenty sixteen. Our rate is three percent higher than it was. Our overall tax rate is three percent higher than it was in in twenty seventeen. That our preliminary budget expenses exceed our revenues. We're still able to offset S or so twenty four is a is a healthy year, but we know we have to look to twenty five because that six million dollar balance is that reduction is significant. And so that's why I keep saying referendum is necessary this fiscal year for the FY twenty five budget. But there's nothing we can do about that until we go through that whole referendum process. On the tuition, the recommendation is a two percent, or I'm sorry, two cent increase. And this is based on those additional units. This speaks to the same thing of opportunity funds, HB one hundred, HB three hundred, the increase in special education and pre K units as well as related services. And it continues, it's important to say, it continues the support that we already have in place for private placement, for consortium and interdistrict tuition billings for students who are attending special schools. The next one is debt service, that's that four cent decrease. And on my notes on here, I see I always get ahead of myself because I already told you it's going down by fourteen cents between now and twenty thirty. But this is the bond repayment and the the payments next year are a million dollars less in between the the balance that's available in debt service and what we have to pay. Four cents is what the tax will decrease. I walked in shortly after I was doing it, I walked into Link's office and I said, you're never going to believe him. That we're going to reduce the tax rate. Who would think when we're talking about, and and this is important too, when we're talking to members of the public? Wait a minute, you say you need a referendum, but you're you're lowering the tax rate because one has nothing to do with the other. And at the same time, it's an important conversation to have about debt service and we're 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 reducing it not because it's not needed, but because those projects have been paid for. Match tax, that one is no change, although it's interesting to point out, and I'll get to this a little bit in the next slide. It's very interesting to point out, we have one of the lowest taxes in the in Newcastle County amongst the other school districts for match. For anyone currently only matches for minor cap technology and reading support. There's a whole host of opportunities for increasing or using other match taxes. But going into a referendum, starting to kind of change around tax structures, something that is really would be not only confusing, but kind of trigger questions and stuff. So we talked last night at the finance committee. We talked about having a long term strategic plan and looking at every single tax category once we get through that referendum and know that we have that healthy local funds balance. The next one is the five rate, five year tax rate history. And you can see there was, there's only been that after twenty sixteen, there was only one increase in the twenty twenty fiscal year of three point nine percent. But us going back down means that that's how we get to that number of three point oh seven percent. We're only seven and a half cents higher than we were in twenty seventeen. And this last one is important because it's it's a slide I always do. And it doesn't look the same. It looks very different district to district, which was surprising to me, more surprising than I even expected. If you look at the tuition tax, for example, the tuition tax in Christina is twenty six, almost twenty seven percent of the budget. Here it's seventeen. And it's not because we're not doing the same things. It's not because we have different amounts of intense and complex. It's because of the general distribution of, we've been taking a lot on the current expense and the match, that two percent match is one of the smallest in the county. And so this also goes to that discussion of having that strategic plan or long range look at how are we overall funding things from all of the tax categories? Nothing for a decision tonight, but certainly for discussion in the future. So the next one is the next steps. And the August meeting will be Mr. Reed presenting the certificate of necessity request. And that includes some financial components to it. And these are just kind of the the rest of what a timeline looks like. This is the same conversation we'll have with with principals as well, because once you say referendum, I think everybody wants to know. And and you're right there with them, Ms. Stock. Everybody wants to know what is it, when is it, how much is it? And I get it. And we just kind of have to go through the the process of of determining that. What, when will the seat, you know, once we know from the C N in October, we will really start to get that plan formalized in November. That's the when I would anticipate coming with the whole kind of package to the board for a recommendation to to shoot for spring. And let me just say, spring, spring is, spring is primary season. And so starting to even look at dates, right? Super Tuesday is March fifth, Delaware's primaries April second. So where we fit into that, that will also be, I think, a robust and healthy discussion on on what is that timing? And what is the best timing? But the other things will continue, the the finance committee will continue to meet monthly and will have the the regular reporting and then the legislative session. We're hearing, we always hear, but we're hearing that their financial outlook is bleak as well. Their S or funds will be ending and the overall health of the state budget. You know, also don't necessarily have additional revenues coming in, especially after the Asscheek court case. So we will continue our discussions.
I have a question. Back on slide five, I think it was with the tuition tax, sorry, it was sick. What is the percentage that the district can increase tuition tax year over year? Is there a, is there a limit to how much that tuition tax can be?
That is the board's discretion.
At the board's discretion. And then, do you know, you mentioned Christina with regards to their tuition tax. What are as far as Newcastle County districts, what are the other districts?
I brought that. So, and this is just a percentage. So Christina's is twenty six percent, Colonial's is fifteen percent, Red Clay's is twenty three percent, Apo's is thirty percent and ours is eighteen percent. So, but but let me say this too, because it's, this is an important part of the equation. Our current expense is one point eight four, whereas the others are one point five, one point five, one point four. And Christina's is two point one, so we're one of the highest current expense. So it's why you can look at each category or you can look at the total and that interrelationship is very important. Because some of them, if you look at the match tax, for example, Apo's match tax is eleven cents versus our five point seven. So how they're funding things out of each bucket is important.
So I guess in layman's terms, it's that the, like, we're pulling more of our funds to support our students with special needs out of the general fund versus coming out of the tuition tax fund where it's meant to be coming from?
Not necessarily meant to be coming from, I think it's the evolution of needs based funding. Brandywine was one of the first districts to go into needs based funding. And so I think that, I think the tuition tax has evolved over time. But I also think that some of the, I can certainly speak to Red Clay. There was generally a two, three cent tuition tax increase every single year because the special education numbers were were increasing dramatically. And so every district is is different, but it doesn't mean that they're serving more or less. It's, you're right, it's just which bucket it's coming out of.
I do, I do recall that in the, I know you showed five years, but I do recall previous two or three years, it was increased
Yes.
each year by a small percentage. But it hasn't been, but yet our population of students with special needs has grown substantially.
And that's why you're seeing a request for a tuition tax increase this year?
Do you anticipate it to be sufficient?
I do.
And one other question. You had mentioned that the previous preliminary budget was not reviewed by the district finance committee. Has the tuition tax been reviewed by the district finance committee?
It has, we we went past two hours last night, so that's why they they punted the the preliminary budget to next month. But yes, the tuition tax was voted, was reviewed and voted and approved by the finance committee last night, the tax warrant.
And not just the tuition tax, all the tax warrants.
Correct, correct, the tax warrant, correct, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? So the recommendation, Ms. Glory, is current expense one point eight three nine, debt service point one seven five, tuition point four four seven, match tax point zero five seven five for a total tax rate of two point five one eight five.
That's correct.
Do I have a motion to accept the tax warrants as presented?
Give me a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion in a second. And Ms. Harris, for the record, I just want to acknowledge Reverend Perry is here for the vote. She was here for the monthly financial report vote as well, just so that's on the record. So I have a motion, Ms. Pigeon, second Reverend Perry. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D. Salary schedules.
Hello again. Um, and and thank you for this. This normally would have been on the normal board agenda. And due to my absence next week, it's on this one, that's entirely my fault. And I thank you for putting it on the agenda tonight. The background, so all of the negotiated contract increases, but one have come before you. And those were contract extensions, one year extensions, knowing that we're going into a referendum and knowing that we need a a longer term kind of financial stability in order to make long term contracts or contractual agreements. The the last groups are those that are non-union and fall on the twelve month salary schedules. And so the recommendation, I wish I could say it was, it was entirely simple. But last year, there was, at the very end of the year, typically, I told you, the state gave a raise. And what what, when the state gives a raise, all of those salary scales that have a state salary amount on there, that state raise is passed along. Positions such as administrative, the next one, if you show, is the is the district office support scale. So those don't have a state side and a local side, primarily because there aren't units. Technology, there's no such thing as a technology unit. So we beg, borrow and steal, sometimes from academic excellence units, sometimes from maintenance units for field technicians, that kind of thing. So there's, there's one salary, but it doesn't show state, local because it can vary based on which scale it pulls off of. And so those salary schedules last year were frozen. And this year, if they were frozen, it would have been the third year that they were frozen. They did, however, receive the twenty seventh pay. But the twenty seventh pay, everybody received the twenty seventh pay on the state side. On the local side, the twenty seventh pay only for those that don't have a state local split. They received it, but didn't receive the state two percent increase. So the state two percent increase wasn't passed along to those two scales last year. But at one time, local twenty seventh pay was given using that two percent from the state. So essentially going into FY twenty four is kind of two components. It's that what happened in twenty three and what happened in twenty four. These scales simply attempt to give the state two percent and the three percent pass it along that we receive or will receive from the state this year on the state side. And then mirroring the other lowest agreements provide one point five percent on the local side for FY twenty three and FY twenty four. That said, there are scales, if you go to the two next ones, those are the ones with the one. These scales, sorry, sideways, these scales have the state side and the local side. Where it has the state side, those were, the state increase last year of two percent was provided or passed along in the scale. So this anticipates passing the three percent on the state side along in the scale. But it provides that one point five percent, which is the the lowest of the negotiated agreements. Similarly, it puts it on the local side of the scale. So really, our recommendation is as much is not to treat groups differently, is not to create, you know, is to kind of unwind what twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty three was and kind of get back to passing along the state. Now, we can't do it every year, you can't do it every year. It depends on our financial position. But this anticipates having that group, the all of the groups, because this is chiefs, this is secretaries, this is any of the twelve month who who fall under those scales, including the cafeteria managers as well.
On the administrator salary schedule, can you just give me an example of a position that would have be in that manager category?
What do you mean?
The very last line on the administrator salary scale is for manager. I was just trying to think of what what position that would cover as an example.
Oh, as an example, we have one here tonight, the manager of finance. Hates to be pointed out, but she'll wave to you. But we have a few in the district.
Thank you.
Transportation manager, correct? Transportation supervisor. But yeah, there.
Additional comments or questions?
I do have one question. Um, for the, yeah, for the administrator's salary schedule, I noticed that there, did we not have steps before? Is that not something that this district has had before?
That is a great question.
Okay.
And we didn't have steps.
Okay.
And so many people misunderstood the salary scale. There was a minimum, there was a midpoint and there was a maximum. We never paid the maximum. We only paid the position salary. And so it was a recruitment and retention issue that when people saw the salary schedule, they thought that there were steps. They thought that eventually if they had a doctorate or they had twenty years of experience, that they would wind up on the far side of the scale. And so between human resources and the administrative teams doing the the interviewing, having the conversations, recruiting people who would say, no, once they found out, we just wanted to be fully transparent and say, this is the salary going forward. And, you know, and and look, long term, do we think that there should be steps? I think that'll be a discussion in the future. It's not a discussion that that we can have at this point, nor should we have. We're not trying to make big changes going into a referendum. We're simply trying to kind of, you know, make the minimal pass along the state without. But I think that is a discussion for the future. But it didn't take away steps.
Any further comments, questions? With that, do I have a motion to accept the twelve month and cafeteria manager salary schedules as presented?
So, second.
Motion Reverend Perry, second Ms. Gordon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I recuse.
Any refusals? Ms. Harris, cover roll call. Yes.
Recuse.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris, motion carries.
You're done with me for a while.
Thank you, Ms. Flor.
Thank you, thank you.
And happy early birthday to your father.
Oh, thank you.
General information, meeting notes, our regularly scheduled meeting will be back here for anyone in high school next Monday, the seventeenth, followed by our board retreat, July twenty sixth and our regular August meeting, August twenty first. Any last comments? Any last comments or questions?
Just a huge thank you. As you know, Ms. Florrie walked in after the budget was prepared for this year. Has found, looked sideways at how we do things and has come up with ideas, suggestions, and has implemented some of those already, some yet to be. All to, again, be excellent fiscal stewards of the, the dollars, whether they be federal, state, but especially local. And I, I just want to express my, my thanks for your effort, your dedication, and again, that, that eye to fiscal stewardship.
And the board thanks you as well. Appreciate it. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion Ms. Stock, second Ms. Pigeon. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention this evening. We'll see you on Monday.